I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Please stand for the name of the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Tanya Hogan? Here. Jerry Golka? Absent excuse. John DeBoyer?
Here.
Mark Richard?
Here.
Roy Martin?
Here.
Beverly Rose? Here.
Prior to beginning the meeting, I would just like to state that...
There you go.
I'm sorry. We lost an important member of our community, a young man, this past year, this past week. And if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to take a moment of prayer for the young man and his family.
Just as a note on that, they do have, still have the GoFundMe app still open. They still have a GoFundMe app, still in place. Anybody who wants to make a donation, I think it's on Facebook.
I'd like to also state that we will run the meeting according to the Roberts Rules of Order. Initially, there is a time for public comment. This is opportunity for public comment on an agenda item. Please state your name and address for the record. Please wait to be recognized by the chair. All comments are made to the chair. You are prohibited in order not to violate this rule or to be unruly making comments from the audience or even clapping and applauding. You have three minutes to make whatever statement you want to make. You're not allowed to address your comments to any member of the board. Again, your statement must be directed to the chair. After the meeting, we'll have post comments. You'll have three minutes to make any comment on any item dealing with the township. It does not have to be on an agenda item. Again, please do not speak until recognized by the chair. Violation of the rule will not be tolerated and could cause your removal from the meeting. And with that, we will move forward with public comment. Anybody who would like to make a public comment on an agenda item, please come forward and make a comment. And I think you can come up here to the podium.
Regarding agenda item... Regarding agenda item consent agenda resignation of Deputy Treasurer Anita Zeppa. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Anita for the 10 years of service as the Clay Township Deputy Treasurer. When I started at the township in 2017, Anita was holding down the fort in the absence of the former treasurer. At the time, I was apprehensive as to what this new, close working relationship with a stranger would be. I could have been walking into an office with a person who was overwhelmed, underappreciated, burned out, or had a bad attitude. Instead, over the days, months, and years that followed, I came to have not just a deputy, not just someone to assist and support me in my role, but a trusted partner in treasury and a friend. Overseeing the collection of taxes, water bills, and assessments is not always a good, fun job. It can have a very negative public undertone and is very stressful at times. What I found in Anita was a community-minded individual who liked to have a strategy, a game plan, and action to serve the residents in the best way possible. Continuous improvement, learning from past experiences, planning for success, not taking shortcuts, and creating great reputation for the township with our neighboring communities and the county are Anita's best qualities. If it was staying open during lunch on tax days, or staying late to get things ready for the next busy day, or if we were short-staffed, none of this was an issue because she had already thought it and was already planning for it. If it was looking at the calendar a year in advance so we could plan for key dates or discuss how we wanted to implement township policies to best serve the residents, it was always on her radar. If I came back from training with an entire page full of new thoughts, she would listen. We could talk about what we thought we could implement quickly and what would take some time and work. If something important was on the horizon and I was in the middle of something else, I could count on her to put it on her calendar so we could revisit it at the right time. She supported me and allowed me to learn my job, fulfill my roles and duties, was always available to listen when I needed sounding board, and helped me make changes and improvements. But you can be sure when we were done, she wasted no time moving on to the next task on her list. Community service is important to me and I found that it was important to her as well. So we found a way to incorporate that into our department, whether it was the Goodfellows, animal control donations, dog license sales, blessing boxes, the food pantry. I could go on and on, she was always in. Anita is the leader of a great team of people we had in the late administrative office. As a resident, I'm disgusted to see the Clay Township Treasury Office in such disarray under such poor leadership, in such a short amount of time, lose a hardworking individual with so much institutional knowledge. But I'm reminded that when people are treated poorly and expected to cover up another individual's willful neglect of duty, they burn out. Anita is a faithful servant of the best interests of Clay Township, and I know she will take those same ethics into her next role in a different department. So I will end with this. Thank you, Anita, for serving Clay Township well.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here regarding that letter from Hogan recommending...
Who are you?
Pardon?
Who are you and what do you...
You know what? I don't need to answer to you. But a lot of people don't say their name. My name is Kelly Nader. I live at 7203 Audubon. But make sure everybody at all the meetings identifies themselves because it seems like select sides don't have to follow the rules.
Relax, Beth, but go ahead.
All right. I'm here regarding the letter of Hogan recommending Anita Zeppa to go to a different department. Under the previous treasurer, there was three full-time employees, including the treasurer, and one part-time. Currently, there is a brand-new part-time inexperienced person and Anita. And Hogan, and then Golka is on family leave that everybody knows, and the other full-time person is on medical leave. So Hogan, at this time, is choosing to leave that department with one person inexperienced. I mean, I don't understand what is her goal. And if this board votes to move Anita on a lateral move and cripple this department further, you guys are responsible. Anita made it very clear when she was insubordinate, bursting through a meeting, in the middle of the meeting, not public comments, telling us she does 90 percent of the work, and now she wants to go to a different department? So if she does 90 percent of the work, this isn't the time to leave when you only have one part-time inexperienced person. That's my point. It's on you, the board, if you cripple this department further.
My understanding is that the treasurer is on family leave and will be performing statutory duties from home, that he will not be coming into the office during his family leave, and that no interim treasurer will be appointed. Statutory duties include hands-on responsibilities that normally require present, being present in the township office, do they not? If no deputy exists, the township board has a responsibility to ensure continuity. So my questions are simple. How is the treasurer lawfully fulfilling these duties from home? Will a deputy treasurer be appointed? And if not, what lawful process is in place to safeguard township funds during this absence, ensuring proper custody and dispersment of public money? Taxpayers deserve clarity and assurance that the township is complying with state law and properly handling public money. Regarding the open position in the building department is a sad day for Clay Township when an exemplary employee of this township for 11 years can no longer work as a deputy treasurer under the supervision of his current treasurer to the point that she has resigned. I urge the board to take Tanya's recommendation and allow Anita to work in the building department. We simply cannot afford to lose someone as principled and professional as Anita. She stands as a pillar of integrity, inspiring respect and confidence, and consistently holds herself to the highest ethical standard. Please do the right thing for this township. Regarding OHM invoices, board members, I urge you not to approve these invoices tonight. When I FOIAed proof of a reimbursement that Maureen requested for a feasibility study, no documented proof was ever produced. If the township can't even document $17, how can we justify paying OHM over $70,000 when the invoices lack basic detail? There are no itemized hours, specific dates, or clear records of work performed. When I requested in a FOIA procurement records all communications with OHM and the township's ARCA policy, the official response was, "What was sent is all the records the township has." That means there is no procurement trail, no ARCA policy, no communications trail, no evidence of proper oversight. To each board member, have you seen the documents that I have requested? If not, why not? If you can't show the records of the, or the details, then you have no business spending public's money. I do believe that rules are important, and I'd like to read from the township's public rules of order regarding public comment. These are from the township. The board will refrain during this portion of the meeting and will not engage in dialogue with the public during this time. Content, behavioral expectations, the public has the right to make critical and harsh remarks during public comments. Thank you.
Sarah Cummins, 9400 Fulker Road. Regarding the agenda item, talk about the treasury. Mr. Golka has been in office for almost a year. In that time, he's missed two tax collections, hasn't balanced our accounts, likely hasn't done his investments, has been incredibly destructive to the community and disrespectful to residents. He has harassed and belittled his staff and other board members. He has made the township offices a miserable place to work, and people are leaving left and right because of his failed leadership. A formal complaint for hostile work environment has been filed against him, and now he has placed himself on a self-assigned leave, meaning he will not report to the office. As an elected official, he will continue to collect his taxpayer-funded salary during this time, whether it lasts 12 weeks or 12 months, despite not actively serving in his role. Elected officials do not qualify for FMLA. He simply decided to take a paid leave with no forethought for his department. I want to have empathy for Mr. Golka, but I believe this is just another excuse to get out of performing his elected duties because a year in, he still has no clue what he's doing. He is simply not qualified. The Clay Township mission statement says, "We protect, preserve, promote, and improve the quality of life in our community by providing leadership and services reflecting the pride, values, and vision of Clay Township." Mr. Golka has violated every aspect of this mission statement since taking office. He continues to divide the community with a social media post from his Jerry Golka Clay Township Treasurer page, including using a child's death in order to spread his harmful narrative. He is not only disrespectful and unprofessional, he is dangerous, and he is going to cost this township tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees, if not more. I'm going to express my very strong opinion that if Mr. Golka truly cares about our community and wants what's best for this township, that he will resign immediately. If he will not do so, the board needs to strongly consider removing him from his duties.
I also would like Jerry to resign. He has been harmful to this whole community. He has not done his job the whole time he's been in office, and we need to get a real treasurer in office to watch our money. It's almost 11 months that he hasn't been derelict in his duties. Please, please, put someone in office that can do this. And as far as paying OHM, please do not pay that until we have information. We still have no information. Anita doesn't give us any, and we don't get any from the board. Can we please get some information before we pay that bill? Thank you.
There's no further public comment. We move to bills payable. We have a motion on bills payable.
I'd like to make a motion to pay bills payable minus the four OHM bills. That total is $78,309.95, or a new total of $203,029.65.
I'll second.
I'd like to break that out, an amendment to the agenda, and put down for 1K the OHM invoices.
Is there a particular reason why we're doing that?
We need further discussion.
Okay, let's have it. Let's have further discussion.
I would like Legal to make sure that the contract that was signed was a legal contract before we spent $80,000.
I see, with some history, we have a lot of...
Mike.
I look back at the history prior to December 30th, and I see where a lot of decisions were made without board approval, and OHM was a big part of that. So we need more discussion on these bills, find out where OHM is. They were supposed to send us a electronic document of the study that they did. Has anybody seen it? Has anybody seen it?
So do we have a final draft of feasibility study number two, Mr. Supervisor?
I don't have it from them. I think they're probably wondering if they're going to be paid.
Will the mail...
Maybe we should check with Legal to make sure the contract...
Well, then you better check with Legal and have it checked out. You could have done it before today, right? You didn't have to wait until now. Why didn't you do it yesterday or day before?
I'm not going to reach an attorney on Saturday or Sunday.
Well, okay. How about last week?
Was that a motion to request the...
I'll make a motion that we request Legal to review all the documents regarding the OHM contract.
We have a motion already on the table that we need to vote on first, and that's the bills payable with the new amount.
We have that motion first.
Let's finish one thing and go to the next.
Okay, so where does 1K stand, Mark's addition to the agenda?
Yeah, we're going to put it down at 1K. All the OHM invoices that we see here on the bills payable, take it down to 1K.
Let's do the bills.
We're going to vote on the bills payable, but not with OHM in it. That's the bottom line.
Nobody made that motion prior to amend the agenda at the appropriate time, did they, Mark or not? Am I wrong?
I don't think she did the... She's the one that paid it. Anyway...
Nobody moved to...
Is there a time when it has to be amended?
Well, we generally do that. That's been our course of action.
I wouldn't say we do anything generally.
We have to do an amendment to take it out of the... Bottom line.
You know what? We generally have a... We generally have a motion to amend the agenda prior to this point in time, and now you want to just bring it up? Just, okay, we're just going to haphazardly change the agenda? Does that end?
I don't think it's a big deal to put it on the agenda, is it?
I'm asking you, if we're going to do that, we'll do it all the time then, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we can do it anytime.
All right, so we're going to have that first motion heard. We had a second. We'll do a roll call.
So before we roll call, can you clarify, we're voting on bills payable less the OHM bill?
Less the four OHM, which totals $78,000.
What was the first motion?
That was the first motion.
Okay, then that's the motion.
So the total bills payable is $203,000.
Okay. How much is the total bills payable of that?
Are we ready for roll call?
Do a roll call.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
No.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to supervisor's report.
Are we going to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the 1K?
Is that what you want to do, Mark?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, aye? Opposed? No? Okay. We'll do the supervisor's report. I'd like to introduce Roy Martin. He's our new member. And welcome aboard, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
And a couple other issues.
Speaking of the microphone...
Why don't you take it out? You can take it out and hold it in your mouth.
As far as Island Drive is concerned, we lost water on Island Drive. A tree broke the water main. I will tell you that Lance got rid of it out there and fixed it in one day. They had to take down four large trees. Lance and I have talked about the fact that the water line runs behind the homes on that side of the street, and I think we have to seriously consider taking down other trees to prevent this from happening in the future. The splash pad went wrong wall this year. I think we should continue it throughout, through the month of September because we've had such good weather and the kids do like it. The Hippie Fest was a success. Everybody enjoyed that. There's been talk about doing a sandbox for the kids, and I think that's great, very little cost. We have the issue with the algae wheel. I'd like to solve that issue at the next meeting. I don't know if we can. PCE is informing that they do not wish to bid it in the fashion that we've gone. The issue with the algae wheel has been this. It was initially a situation for $2 million, and you're going to build a sewage treatment plant for the downtown area, including some homes. It grew under the last super project to 6.6 million. There was no chance of getting that kind of funding, so we, I told PCE to quit working on it. Then Bennett's company came in, and Bennett has come in and said, "We can do it for the money that's left, and we can do an algae wheel, septic field, whatever sewage treatment plan." And for the amount of money that's left in the appropriation... This was not a grant. This was an appropriation through Kevin Hurtell, and I know he would like to see it completed. And I am sure that the businesses in downtown San Souci would like to see it completed. I know that Mr. Monte, who I very much like, and he's done lots of work for me in the past, has decided that he doesn't really want to bid it in the fashion that it's developed. But Bennett is willing to do that, and I'm hoping that in the next couple of weeks, we can get a date certain of start, a date certain of finish, and an amount to do the job. And if Mr. Monte wants to continue with it, I'd be happy to have him, but I received a letter from him, and he's not, didn't seem that he was interested in handling it the way it's progressed. So that's about the only information I have on the algae wheel, and it's just got to get done. I mean, the San Souci is just suffering, and I think people should understand. They had approval to do a septic field, and they thought it was in the best interest of the public to do this algae wheel and benefit the whole downtown area, and now there's been tens of thousands of hours for waste removal. I think they deserve an awful lot of credit. With that, we'll go to the consent agenda. Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the board approved from 9/8, in between meetings, the meeting minutes from 9/8-25, and the resignation of our Deputy Treasurer Anita Zeppa.
Support. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Go to unfinished business, new business, building department, Anita Zeppa, Building Assistant. Do you have her enter the building department as an employee? Do you have Anita enter the building department as an employee?
I will make a motion to approve Anita Zeppa moving to the building department on September 29th.
Support.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. So we're going to appoint Monica Pilarski. She was at our meeting where she gave us her background. I think she'd make a wonderful person in the ZBA, and I hope the board will support that. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Monica Pilarski to ZBA.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Fire chief contract. Do we have a motion on the fire chief's contract?
I'll make a motion to accept the fire chief's Clay Township contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the fire chief's Clay Township Fire Department contract.
I'll second.
One question, Tanya.
Yes.
Is the comp time, sick time, or vacation time bank, is that consistent with our township policy that we have for all our department heads?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
No.
Beverly Rose?
Upstate.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to 1D, administration. The alarm lock keypad for two office doors. We have a quote, and do we have a motion on that?
The doors are for... They are for the building department. The two doors in the building department, if anybody comes in, they can just push right through them and go into the building department. So for safety reasons, with, I think everybody can understand the type of world we live in now, we thought it was a good idea to get a lock so only employees can get in and out of there instead of somebody busting in and busting through the doors and doing whatever they please.
So it's just a basic keypad?
Yeah.
Works in the numbers?
Yes. Just like the one we have for the administrative side.
I'll make a motion to approve at the lock slip for $2,475 out of line number...
There he is.
Out of line number 101. Out of line number 101.
Support. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1E, sanitary system improvements, lining small diameter. They need a change order.
So this is actually a request for an extension on the contract because if you look, the contract, the original contract date was supposed to be done sooner, but because of the timeline that we took, it was supposed to be done. So everything got pushed back. After the bidding process, nobody accepted a bid, so the timeline's getting pushed back. So the company is now requesting an extension for their timeline. And they anticipate the project completion date to be June 15th, 2026. We just have to agree upon it.
So that's an increase of $79,000?
No, that increase was already a change order. We're just accepting the extension time. Because when we, I, we must have missed it. I didn't realize they requested extension time when we voted on that change order. So now we have to go back and just approve the extension time for them.
We already agreed on the gain.
So the bid was awarded on August 1st of 2024. But it doesn't look like it was signed and approved by the township till February of 2025. What was the reason for that delay?
Obviously, it wasn't, I think probably we weren't provided with it.
Well, I think it has to do with the timeframe. That happened on August 1st and we were in the middle of election season. And with everything that was going on, I think the previous board probably made the decision to kind of table that until they saw what was happening. So then it got pushed back to us, you know, after the election happened, projects came up to us instead of them just agreeing on something in a short amount of time.
All right. I'll take a vote. All in favor, aye? Opposed?
Well, nobody made a motion.
Oh?
Nobody made a motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion on that?
I will make a motion to approve the extension, the request time for extension on the 2024 sanitary system improvement CIPP lining small diameter project.
Support.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1F.
Just to confirm, you'd like to call it off?
I'm sure everyone heard that. All right. We'll go to 1F, sanitary improvements, lining small diameter, third pay application. Line item 590000971.00.
So what this one is, this is for the same exact project. This is just making the board aware that we are in, that this is the third pay application that we will be making on this project. And that is the amount to provide everybody with the timeline and how much we've been paying on each project. So I will make a motion to approve the third pay application.
I'll support it and I have a question. So it's $504,808.42. And excuse my ignorance, but I'm assuming that line item is sanitary sewer fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes.
No, this is the, this is the capital one.
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement?
Yes.
As we discussed in the past, since we are getting a bond, to keep track of all the funds we've been spending to replace that with the bond money, I've been pulling it from the same account and that's this account.
So what's the... I think that'll occur in October.
October?
Okay.
Okay. Because my concern is, obviously, there's not a lot of money in sewer.
Right.
And we know there's going to be more draws coming from these contractors. And we may run out of money in fund balance, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1G, city of Algonac invoice from the December water main break.
I'm going to make a motion to table this until the next meeting. We, Lance and I, have been in communication with Algonac and we're going to sit down and have a meeting with them to discuss this invoice.
I'll support that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Toshiba investment schedule.
No, this one is for us. I met with Toshiba. Our current plan is not up yet, but they are raising all of their prices come October. And with the plan they presented, we will actually be getting a better machine and saving $10 a month. So I brought it to the board because come October 1st, all of their prices are going up 10%. So if we sign this now, we'll be locked in for a 63-month term, I believe, is what it was.
So we were paying close to $300 a month?
Yes. This is very comparable. You'll see in there what we were paying and what we are going to be paying. It was provided in the packet.
Any further discussion while roll call?
We need a motion.
We do.
Choking the gun.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Toshiba investment schedule. Schedule out of line 101-265-940.00 for $298 a month.
Support. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1I is the Nook Road estimate. This is, I asked the county. The county informed me that they can partially pay 50% of any improvements or any work we want on roads. I asked them to identify a road. They identified Nook Road. I don't think Nook Road needs the improvements.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah.
I'm with them all the time.
I don't think they do. And so I don't think that we need to make any improvements on Nook Road. It'd be better to make improvements on, South Channel needs it more than Nook Road. I'll say that.
What was, was it, did it have to be a primary road or did it matter?
No, I just, I talked to the county and asked them for an assessment of any roads they thought, they thought needed some work on them. It was identified as Nook Road. When I took a look, I said, "There's no way that needs to be done."
Was there an option B?
No. Just, that was the only road they identified.
And this was a 50% match?
It was.
So is that something that we lose if we don't do anything?
Well, we're not going to do anything, so they're not going to give us 50% for nothing.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is there other roads we should maybe consider and run by them?
The only, only other road I would consider is South Channel in the downtown area. That needs more work than, than anything.
Have you brought that up to the county and asked them if we could pick the road, maybe?
No, I, I just took a look at it myself, made that decision.
So was that, was that done recently, Mr. Supervisor? Did they just approach you and say, "We think..."
Yeah.
Okay. Because typically, there'll be an annual inspection of township roads.
At the end of the month, we can, we can ask them to do 50% on any road we want. If you have a road that you'd like to...
I don't, but I may.
I didn't either.
You know, I didn't know it was even a thing, so.
Yeah.
Is there a deadline on this?
End of the month.
End of September?
The end of September?
Oh, nice.
Next week?
I know, I've been on the drain, drainage issue.
Well, you know what, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, drainage issues too, but I'll be willing to go on the road tour as well.
I would just tell you that I didn't get the information from them until, what, two days ago? They finally came through and told me.
So who would you communicate with? Was that Ms. Nelson?
Yes. So I don't, as far as I'm concerned, we don't need to spend any money on Nook Road. I'd make a motion not to, too many improvements on Nook Road.
Support.
All in favor, aye?
Do we want to pursue possibly another road?
If you've got one, I've driven a number of roads. I didn't see anything other than South Channel.
Okay, is that an option? Is South Channel an option?
Can you call them tomorrow and see if they would consider it?
I'll call and see.
They just redid a road probably three years ago, Stone Road, which came around the cemetery up to Mill Street. It was practically brand new. They just tore that up last week. I have no idea why.
Well, they're doing the same thing in the city in the Baltimore, but I will tell you that, you know...
Hold the microphone up.
Whether you like it or not, I've had neighbors in the area of Nook Road, on Nook Road, tell me that they are hauling aggregate into the, into the sand pit there and that, and that that's causing problems on the road. Now, I didn't see it, but that's what they've told me.
So...
So I will be happy to talk to her about South Channel.
Is this only applicable to a road? And the reason I ask that is?
Yes.
Yes? Bayview Shores comes to mind. We know we have a culvert down there that's failing. Could that be applied to that?
Well, I'll ask her.
Yeah, we probably should. That's, yeah. It's like that whole road here, ready to slip into the ditch.
I'll talk to her.
So is this capped at 60, or at...
50%.
So is it dollar amount or a percentage?
Dollar amount.
So it's capped at $65,000?
Oh, no. No, no. I'm sorry. It's capped at 50% of whatever the cost is.
Okay.
I'll be happy to talk to them about the issue of the culvert.
So we have a motion to table this or...
Why don't we table it? All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, hold on.
We can second it.
We already had a vote.
Well, you already had a motion on the table. We have to finish out the first motion in order to go to another motion.
I would draw the motion. Motion to table it.
Support.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion on Treasury Department. I'm not sure what the discussion's meant to be, but I have talked with a, I have talked with a former treasurer from Macomb Township. Said she'd be happy to come in and act as a deputy assistant to help us with the issues in the Treasury Department. And I have a meeting set with her tomorrow at 9:30.
Is Jerry coming to that meeting?
I'll let him know to come.
Well, we can't do anything without him. He has to appoint someone.
I'll get him there.
Okay. And I wanted this on here because we have a lot going on. We, the township is basically going to be at a standstill because the reconciliations are not done. I talked to Manor and they are only, just now, starting April, they were only at March and they were, Jerry had told us at the 28th, the July 28th meeting, that they could have it all done in 30 days. And I'm just, I reached out to Jerry and asked and he haven't received a response on what's going on with the tax account and the DDA account. I think we, you know, have a bigger problem here than just that. We need to know what's going on.
You can come tomorrow at 9:30.
Okay.
So, so, could fill me in, what is the status of our treasurer?
Well, he's been off. That's all I can tell you.
What do you mean, he's off?
Well... He's not coming in, John.
Okay.
He's more concerned about his son than he is about anything else.
I can, I can sympathize with that, but I, I...
Well, there's a long walk tomorrow, I would think.
I guess there's a little confusion because from the email that I read, apparently he feels he's under the Family Medical Leave Act to take 12 weeks off. Is that correct?
I didn't get that email, so I don't know.
You didn't get the email?
I don't remember seeing that.
I thought the whole board got it.
You were on that email.
Maybe I did.
Okay. So just, just so the board understands that elected officials are not even entitled to a leave, period. Whether it's family medical leave or whatever you want to call it, there's no such thing. I talked to the MTA on it. It's not, it's not an option. So Mr. Galca needs to tell us what the status is and what his plans are because it's not up to this board to do his duties.
Well, why don't we wait until tomorrow?
He's 100% responsible for his duties.
Why don't we wait until tomorrow?
And by the way, we don't have the right to appoint a deputy. He has to do it.
Yeah. All right.
Is he coming in tomorrow?
I'm going to ask him to come in. Yep.
Still has to be approved by the board, whether we choose.
Correct. I agree.
Well, my concern is, is our next board meeting's not for three weeks because we changed them to the second and third.
Well, do we want to make a motion to allow him to appoint a deputy until...
Well, would the board be okay with possibly throwing in a special meeting to discuss the situation we're in further?
Why don't we decide it right now? If he...
Well, because how are we supposed to decide something if we don't know anything about the person?
Well, I can fill you in a little bit.
So is this, is this somebody you know, Mr. Supervisor?
Never met her before.
I was just curious, what are you going to fill us in?
Well, I think we could just throw in a special meeting if need be to address the situation.
That's up to you. All right. We could do that. All right. So we'll table this? Is that the idea? Do we have a motion to table?
Well, we can set up a special meeting. If she's coming in at 9:30, we can set up a special meeting a day or two after that. Get it done quick.
Once we get an answer from Jerry and figure out what's going on and if she, are we planning on this person coming in full-time just as a deputy? Do we know any of that yet?
It'll be discussed other than she is available and she'll discuss whether she wants to come and do it.
So the only way anybody can, the only way a full-time deputy can be approved is number one by Jerry.
And then to hold a full-time position within the Treasury Department is a board decision.
Well, that's, that's a different position.
Yes, it's completely separate.
So I think it's important, before we move on to that, that we also get updated on where we're at with Manor Consortium, on a reconciliation, where we're at with all our accounts and investments. Because to expect somebody to come in green and, and to be able to handle all that, I don't think is fair, to be honest with you.
We should be starting our audit too.
All right. We'll set it aside, we'll table it, and we'll have a special meeting. That's what's needed. All right? Is everybody in agreement? Want a motion?
Yeah, take a motion. You make a motion, I'll support it.
I'll make that motion. You can support. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll go to public comments. This does not have to be on an agenda.
What happened to our OHM discussion?
1K.
I don't see it on 1K.
Well, we added it.
Yeah, okay. So we got what? 1H? OHM? Am I right?
Yeah, 1K.
I'm sorry, 1K? You have to learn this stuff a bit.
I keep on seeing this, the OHM and invoices coming through about every other meeting that we have. And I'm just wondering where it's going to end. I haven't seen any of the, I haven't even really seen any of the invoices, basically, according to what they have done. I like to do other, other contractors. It's really hard for me to, myself, to approve anything for OHM until we see something. Now, last week, or last time they were here, they said they were going to send an electronic copy of the current study up to date. Haven't seen that either. So I want to know if they're going to give us a copy and then we're going to pay for it? Or we're just going to pay for it and hope we get a copy?
I don't even think we have a hard copy at this point.
No.
Okay, any other comments?
So is it this board's desire to, to give an official legal opinion then on whether or not that... or not that contract is even appropriate?
That's what I heard last few minutes ago. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move on. Public comments?
Cheryl Vascevo, five-two-seven, I have phone tremble. Also the deputy supervisor, and I wanted just to speak on the doors' behalf because, sorry, I was guilty of it. I wanted to speak on the doors' behalf because it is securing two doors. It's the back door to the meeting and then the front door to the building department, so I think it'll keep everybody safe. I also wanted to take the minute to thank Anita for teaching me everything that I've known so far since I've gotten there. I'm starting to see her go, but I think she'll be a great asset to the building department. And I also want to congratulate the chief to his project.
Do you guys want to pick the mics up and put them back up here? I think with the computers, my name is.
Susan Bryson, Harson's Island. It's the twenty-first century, and we cannot hear any of you hardly at all. Can't you get like the little mics that go on your lapel so that all of us can hear you? It's, it's really hard to hear and to understand what's going on. That's one. Jerry Galca needs to resign. I mean, here we had Anita doing all the work, and now she is left, and she's going to the building department, and now you're wanting to hire somebody else in her place when she did a marvelous job, Anita. Thank you.
Joanne Siska, five-thousand-tenth. I just want to say that because of all the vicious lies that were said about the previous board, you're in this spot because people believed it. They voted for these people here. They voted. My daughter is Christina. She has done, the years that she has worked there, she has never had any problems. She learned her job, she did her job, and it's people believing a bunch of lies instead of checking out yourself and saying, you know, what's true, what's not true. That's the problem. It'll never get good as long as some of these people are up there. Over the past eleven years, I'm sorry to do that. Over the past eleven years, I have come to deeply admire Anita. Like so many of those working in our township, she was always friendly and helpful to residents. Anita carries herself with dignity and grace, is consistently professional, fair, compassionate, and resilient, and always holds herself to the highest ethical standards. She is a pillar of integrity. Her honesty, her sense of responsibility, and her courage in challenging moments set an example for all of us. Her presence inspires confidence, her judgment earns trust, and her actions always align with her values. You could tell how much Anita loved her job, and it showed in the way she performed it, confidently and enthusiastically. After eleven years with the township, she had no intention of leaving. So what happened? Doesn't she sound like exactly the kind of coworker you'd want, or the kind of person you'd hire in a heartbeat? She sounds perfect, right? The answer is yes, unless you are an insecure, incompetent, toxic supervisor. Because when someone insecure is in power, the strengths of a competent, professional woman like Anita don't inspire collaboration. They expose weakness. Instead of rising to the challenge, insecure supervisors try to diminish, control, or undermine. Competent supervisors don't quayk on their knees when working with other competent people. They respect their strengths, they value their contributions, and they collaborate for success. Weak supervisors, on the other hand, create toxic workplaces that drive good people away. That's exactly what happened here. Anita didn't leave because she wanted to. She left because the environment became so unhealthy that she could no longer stay. And that should concern every single taxpayer in this room, because if the township can't keep the best people, then we are left with the worst kind of leadership. So here's the lesson. When you chase away competence, you're left with incompetence. When you silence integrity, you empower misconduct. And when you create a workplace so toxic that the best people quit, the people who lose the most aren't just the employees, it's all of us, the citizens you're supposed to serve. I've mentioned that we need to go to Plan C, Citizens for Recall, but I need to clarify that I am not personally involved in a recall, and I don't know who is handling the process. But whoever you are, I say thank you. You are doing a great service for our township. My pen is ready to sign on the dotted line as soon as those petitions are ready, so that if successful, we can all happily say, Officer, I want that man removed.
My name is Robert Siska, five-thousand-tenth. My wife and I moved here six, almost seven years ago because we moved to something better than what we had in Lennox Township. Want to be close to our kids and our grandson, our, only one daughter. She's a joy of our life. The things I've heard from people in this, in this township, the lies. If she did something, bring the facts and bring it to us. Bring it to her face. Don't put it on a text or a post on some stupid page that a lady runs or controls everything that goes on there. I made one comment, I got thrown off. I want to ask you a question. How do people run for office that have no idea what they're going to do when they get in there?
She can't run a meeting.
She has no idea how to run a meeting. He sits her on his little paper reading. Between him and Jerry Galca. How do you put a treasurer in office that knows nothing about being a treasurer? Because he run AAA? Because he run a chicken company? Why would a person take a job like that from a qualified person, knowing he can't do the job? Anybody have anything to say? Mr. Cassidy, do you know what you're doing?
Nope.
Mr. Galca, do you know what you're doing?
I know what Jay DeBoyer is doing.
He's running the board. Yeah, he's taking, he's covering for you. Everybody's got a cover for your inequalities. So I got to say, you know where I live? Anybody guys say anything to me? Or you want to say something bad about my daughter? Five-thousand-tenth, come and talk to me. Let's talk.
Hi, my name is Kathy Schweitzer. Can everybody hear me? Great. I just handed to each board member entitled, the documents entitled, update to board of trustees members on LG plant project. I am just going to read this into the record because this is only public comments at this point, and that's all I'm doing. All right? So distribution of Benitch's LG plant design, September twenty-second, 2025. Board of trustee members, during your meeting held on September eighth, hard copies of Benitch's design for the LG plant located on Harson's Island were distributed to all board members. These documents contain the relevant information regarding the project's scope and design details. Project manager contact information. The contact information for Benitch's project manager, Mr. Thierdory, is included within the distributed copies for any further inquiries or correspondence related to the project. It is important to all of us that you reach out to the individuals identified in the attachment in order to properly review the proposal. Thank you, downtown San Sou, excuse me, downtown San Souzy business owners. On the second page is a listing of four individuals as references. We, as a downtown community, would very much encourage this board to please reach out and check, check our facts, check the project, and please do us a favor of coming on October, I believe it's fourteenth, ready to discuss this matter. Thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Palano, on behalf of SSDI, SS Downtown Inc. Since November, the November 2024 election, the agenda to pursue the second DDA designation for San Souzy appears to have permanently stalled. While we recognize this board has many issues and priorities to address, we believe that this is an important initiative that could bring much-needed benefits and funding to the San Souzy area. So SSDI would like to reach back out to Senator Turtell's office to discuss the current status and explore how we can help move the effort forward. Secondly, in respect to the South Channel Road, potentially having fundings available for resurfacing, we have reached out to the county in the past, and it's basically fallen on deaf ears. We've not gotten any response. So if this is an option for the South Channel, absolutely, we would like to see that funding come this way. Thank you.
I just had a couple things that I've been noticing. They were, can you hear me? They were also a problem of the previous administration. Clerk Hogan, I was wondering why the SMUA meetings and the minutes and the agendas are not on the Clay Township webpage. I know you've been requested to get them a couple times. They're still not there. In the act of transparency, it'd be nice if we could know what's going on there. And Mr. DeBoyer, you've been on that committee, and you're supposed to be giving a report. I know you were requested to give reports, but we have not heard one thing. The one time you, with a smirk, said you're going to ask the taxpayers for ten million dollars, but you didn't say why. And we never get a report, what's going on in that SMUA.
I must have left in a different world than you. I don't remember that.
And you're not supposed to respond.
Oh, sorry, Chairman.
And Mr. Borshar, you're on the planning commission. You never give a planning commission report, ever. The one time you did, you said something, and then there was a public hearing the next day, and you forgot to mention it. So that, and then Bev Rose, you were talking about communication's important, and you spoke to Jake Bryson about that fencing. Well, that blighted property, property's still not fenced. I was wondering, in your communication, did he say when he's going to block that off? So, just open the communication, and that's it. Thank you.
If Jerry feels he doesn't have to show up, or doesn't need to show up for the next twelve weeks, I don't think we need him at all. I don't know why we should keep him on the board. If he doesn't want to step down, there is another method of removing him. This is from MCL, section one-six-eight, point three-six-nine. The governor shall remove a township officer chosen by the electors of any township when the governor is satisfied from the evidence submitted that the officer has been found guilty of official misconduct, willful neglect of duty. Does that ring a bell? Extortion, habitual drunkenness, or has been convicted of being drunk, et cetera, et cetera. There's a whole section over here, but willful neglect of duty, wow. I would like to ask the board, if Jerry does not resign, that the board contact the governor, get your evidence together, willful neglect of duty, ask the governor to have him removed. Thank you.
Can I just get your name real quick? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Kathleen Vachos.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Wendy Vanhaaklenkovich, and I live in Elginac. I would like to say good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for the township regarding a matter of concern that has recently come to my attention concerning conduct during township meetings. While I do not reside within Clay Township, I do have children in the school district, and over the last few months, I have attended several meetings in support of my community and a close friend. During these observations, I have noted a concerning decline in the professionalism and decorum exhibited during these meetings. Specifically, there have been instances involving raised voices, disrespectful exchange among board members with other board members, and the removal of members of the public attempting to voice their opinions during public comments. As elected or appointed officials of the township, it is imperative that all board members maintain a standard of respectful conduct, particularly during public meetings. The, I apologize, I don't talk much publicly. The frustration expressed by some board members regarding public comments, commenters manifesting as interruptions, distractions, or displays of poor taste may stem from confusion about the boundaries between First Amendment rights and proper meeting protocols. It is essential to distinguish between the constitutional right of freedom, free speech, and the expectations of respectful, orderly participation in government meetings. Examples? We have to lead by example, obviously. Most recently, we observed a situation where board members were engaged in personal attacks against each other in a public setting. Such behavior undermines the credibility of the township, diminishing public trust, and could have legal implications. Specifically, conduct that disrupts the open and transparent nature of meetings may constitute violation of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, OMA. Violation of the OMA can lead to decisions being invalidated and may expose the township to legal liability, including potential sanctions or remedies sought through legal channels. These actions threaten the integrity of the township's governance and could result in adverse consequences if not addressed properly. Furthermore, I have heard references made by board members to the Open Meetings Act and Robert's Rules of Order. It is important to clarify the distinction between these two frameworks. The Michigan Open The Michigan Open Meetings Act is a statutory requirement designed to ensure transparency, accountability, and public access to government decision-making, public decision-making processes. OMA applies whenever a public body gathers to discuss or decide on official business, whether in person or through other communication means. It mandates that meetings be open to the public with certain exceptions and includes enforcement provisions and penalties for violations. Robert's Rules of Order are a procedure system intended to facilitate orderly and efficient internal governance within boards, committees, and other organizations. These rules govern the conduct of meeting amongst members, and such as how motions are made and debated, and do not supersede the requirement of OMA during public meetings. It is critical to understand that OMA takes precedence during public proceedings, especially in matters involving public comment and decision-making. Robert's Rule serves as a procedural guide for internal governance only, but does not override the legal obligations set forth from the Open Meetings Acts. Misapplications or misrepresentation of this framework can lead to procedural errors and legal challenges. I urge the township to reaffirm its commitment to professionalism, transparency, and compliance with applicable laws. Clear communication, adherence to legal standards, and respectful participation are essential to maintain public trust and uphold the integrity of our local government. Addressing these issues proactively will help prevent future conflicts and potential legal ramifications. I say lead by example. I saw behavior in meetings against other board members that is embarrassing, should not be happening, and OMA regulates how we speak during Open Meetings Acts. Robert's Rules are for you to follow. So I ask that you start following and setting an example, and it may alleviate some of the confusion between saying what needs to be said and constructive criticism. Thanks.
Hello, WMAX 1614, South Channel. I just feel like there's a lack of leadership. It just seems so evident. There was no mention of the audit tonight. The treasurer is on a self-appointed leave, had the inability to perform their duties before they left for this leave. The deputy treasurer has now resigned, who, so who has the authority to perform the duties of the treasury department right now? I don't think there's anybody. And if there's nobody, then who's handling the money? And there was no meeting scheduled for two days from now, it's like talked about very laxadaysically. It, it just seems there needs to be more sense of urgency. You've mentioned, I've spoke to somebody who the other board members were not aware of, Mr. Cassidy, that may be able to fulfill this position, but there just seems to be a more defined timeline for such a critical role. This is the handling of our funds of our township, and there's no, no sense of urgency. So to me, you need to define when this next meeting is going to be, and get somebody appointed as the deputy treasurer, since we have nobody right now. My opinion.
No further public comment, we'll go to board member comments. Mr. DeBoyer?
I just want to say thank you to the water department, to go above and beyond, that was a pretty unique water main break they had, and they did a great job getting it done and repaired. And also thank you to Monica Bilarski for stepping up and filling the void at the ZBA. I do find it incredible that some people come up and make comments about deficiencies or things they don't agree with, but ignore the elephant in the room on what's went on around here in the last nine months. Just keep that in mind when you put any merit in those comments.
I'd like to thank Anita for time with the township as deputy treasurer, and congratulations on her moving over to the building department.
Yeah, I want to thank Anita for the 11 years that she's spent here as treasurer, deputy treasurer. I remember coming in as a trustee eight years ago, and she was sat behind that desk, and she was still sat behind that desk until last week, when this ordeal went down with the treasurer. I want to call for an investigation to start immediately. We'll make in contact with investigators and get this thing put, put to rest once and for all. It's a gone-too-far, hostile work environments, is basically against the law, it's in the CWA, the Michigan Safety Book, so let's, let's put it to bed.
I want to thank Lance for the great job the DPW always does with all these water main breaks we keep seeming to have. And I want to thank Anita for all the work she's done as the deputy treasurer. And I do want to say, as sitting on this board, not only do I have a duty to the township residents, but I have a duty to my employees, and I will not sit back and let one of my employees be uncomfortable in the workplace, and I stand by my decision for moving Anita to the building department.
I'd like to welcome Monica to ZBA. And I noticed on the bill for the locks for the door, it had Cheryl's name on it. That has always bothered me. Cheryl, thank you for doing that and researching that, to have some locks there. Anita, I've known you for 11 years. The last five years of my career, we probably saw each other every day because I needed some clarification. You always gave me honest information, you helped me tremendously, you've helped that department tremendously, and I know where you go next, you are going to make a big impact.
Relative to the DDA, that has not stalled, the law has moved into the Senate this week. We hope by the end of the, by the end of fall, we'll have a, a law in place allowing us to use DDA money in the downtown San Suzy area. And that's about it. Next meeting is October 14th, 6 o'clock, unless there's a special meeting, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, aye.